Bienvenidos de nuevo a la primera sesión del tarde para nuestra conferencia sobre conveni una cuarta sesión especial sobre desarmamento en las Naciones Unidas. Mi nombre es Martin Butcher, soy el asesor político sobre conflicto armado y derecho humanitario internacional para Oxfam, habiendo unido a Oxfam hace una década o más para trabajar en el equipo sobre la negociación de la negociación de comercio armado. Esta sesión trata de contribuciones de miembros de la sociedad civil. Tenemos una variedad de personas aquí en la mesa, contribuciones live en Zoom y mensajes de video. Así que sin más, voy a pedirle a Ben Donaldson, quien es el líder en temas de desarmamento para UNA UK, para hacer su presentación.
Primero, un par de observaciones sobre el estado en el que estamos y dónde estamos con el desarmamento. En 2009, Banky Moon, entonces secretario general de las Naciones Unidas, dijo algo que siempre me quedará en mente, y es que el mundo está sobrepuesto y la paz está bajo financiamiento. En ese entonces, la gasto militar global era apenas más de un billón de dólares, eso es 1.000 millones. Diez años después, las últimas cifras de Citrix colocan la gasto militar global en más de doble que esa cifra, más de dos billones. Y otro secretario general, Dag Hammerschall, dijo una vez que la ONU estaba diseñada no para llevar a la humanidad al cielo, sino para salvar a la humanidad del infierno. Para dar un poco de contexto sobre esa cifra que acabo de hablar, esos dos billones realmente financiarían a las Naciones Unidas aproximadamente 666 veces, un número un poco auspicioso cuando estamos hablando de la costumbre de oportunidades de todo ese gasto que va a las militares globales. Y tal vez eso es lo que tomará para salvar a la humanidad del infierno. Hablando de costumbre de oportunidades, hemos oído mucho acerca del cambio climático hoy y justamente así. La segunda observación es que la guerra causa el cambio climático y el cambio climático causa la guerra. Solo dos ejemplos muy breves sobre esto. Hay este nuevo modelado, seguro que muchos de ustedes lo han visto, publicado en el periódico Nature hace un mes y medio atrás, que mostró que incluso un intercambio nuclear limitado, como el de Pakistán y India, crearía una crisis alimentaria mundial que duraría al menos una década, en la que cientos de millones morirían. Otra dimensión de esto es el trabajo de científicos para la responsabilidad global y el profesor Stuart Parkinson, quien habló de la necesidad de cuentar correctamente el rastro de carbono militar, o el rastro militar como lo llama. No es parte del acuerdo climático de París todavía, y no está sujeto al mismo tipo de escrutinio que otros partes de la industria están sujeto. Y la otra observación es, quiero mencionar rápidamente, la relación no saludable entre los ministros de defensa en todo el mundo, ministros de defensa en todo el mundo, universidades y empresas armadas. Un informe que la asociación de las Naciones Unidas lanzará más tarde este mes junto con su campaña para detener a robots matadores que en realidad escrutina 12 universidades basadas en Reino Unido, no incluye a SOAS en realidad. SOAS se desvía ligeramente en esto porque no tienen el mismo tipo de militares, no reciben los mismos tipos de fondos del Ministerio de Defensa de Reino Unido. Pero estos 12, dentro de estos 12 universidades que este informe mira, hay un entorno de investigación increíblemente perturbador bajo el que se están llevando a cabo programas de investigación, hay un déficit de políticas estrictas sobre enseñanza, sobre ética, sobre las propias reglas éticas, inconsistencia en esas reglas y un déficit de transparencia sobre cómo ese dinero público se gasta. También se gana directamente, las empresas armadas financian directamente programas universitarios aquí en Reino Unido, lo cual también es preocupante. Por último, el informe mira los riesgos, los procedimientos de esa investigación serán en realidad utilizados e incorporados en sistemas de armas autónomas letales que se conocen como robots matadores y los riesgos de uso dual de esa proliferación, así que eso es algo perturbador. Y solo sobre la opinión pública británica, UNA UK hizo un par de encuestas hace unos años y en realidad encontraron que alrededor de la mitad de los británicos piensan que cuando se trata de seguridad personal de hogar, es más importante tener relaciones amigables con tus vecinos y una buena relación con tu comunidad en lugar de tener fuertes cerraduras en tus puertas. Y cuando hablan de esto, subescalar esto al contexto nacional, en realidad más de la mitad piensa que, aproximadamente el 57% piensa que a nivel nacional, las relaciones internacionales fuertes son más importantes que un militar poderoso. Así que en realidad hay un poco de apoyo político allí, creo que podemos trabajar con él. Y muestra que hay sensitividades a los tipos de enfoques de seguridad humana y no solo esta trampa de seguridad dura que hemos sido llevados a creer que es bueno para nuestro país o seguridad. Y solo sobre los detalles de la sesión especial de la ONU sobre desarmamento, es una idea bonita. Trabajo para la asociación de las Naciones Unidas, tengo un punto débil para ideas geek de la ONU y interesantes nuevos mecanismos que pueden ser utilizados para hacer cosas más. Tengo algunas preguntas sobre el proceso. El proceso en sí, creo, es el más fácil, conseguir que el G A llame a una de estas sesiones es bastante accesible. Por ejemplo, hemos hablado de la idea de poner a Nam en el board, eso sería prácticamente hacer el trabajo porque la mayoría simple sería lo que se necesita. Mi pregunta realmente para el equipo de scrap es, ¿cuáles son las perspectivas de progreso en realidad en la sesión especial general de la Asamblea? Una vez que llegamos allí, ¿y qué propósito serviría más allá de eso que los primeros comités de discusiones y otras discusiones y otros foros ya sirven? Y luego, en terminología, solo un punto corto, dejemos de llamarlo G A S S o gas porque la ONU siempre se golpea por todo el gas y no acción, así que eso podría ser un mal omen para este uno. Sabes, la ONU puede ser un poco de un taller de conversación y eso es una crítica válida de las Naciones Unidas, así que nos alejemos de eso. Y solo en conclusión, supongo que estas son las razones por las que soy optimista y creo que todos deberíamos apoyar la idea de una sesión especial de G A. El desarmamento es el negocio de todos, las agencias no deberían dejar a esos estados muy armados y esta sesión especial de G A podría ayudar a todos los estados a colaborar con la sociedad civil y tomar posesión de este tema de una manera holística. Puede actuar como un llamamiento de despertar porque precisamente no es parte del general chancé y la Asamblea General politizada. Así que creo que podría actuar como un buen llamamiento de despertar y obligar a los estados a reflexionar en la dirección peligrosa de viaje. También es una oportunidad para demostrar la opinión pública global y el acto de demostrar la opinión pública global en sí mismo puede ser una movilización para cambiar la voluntad política y para decir, oh, si eso es lo que todos estos países y todas estas organizaciones de la sociedad civil y todas estas diferentes organizaciones de信仰 piensan, sabes, tal vez deberíamos hablar de esto más y tal vez, sabes, podría ser el inicio de un paso útil, un bloqueo útil hacia cambiar el diablo político. Así que creo que vale la pena perseguir por esas razones. Y por último, creo que uno de los, bueno, dos puntos finales. Primero, la sesión especial de G A necesita alcanzar un resultado específico y uno que complementa los mecanismos existentes, no uno que va a tratar de recrear la rueda, como mencionó alguien antes de esta mañana. Una forma de hacer esto es, yo recomendaría al equipo de scrap ver cuidadosamente la agenda común del secretario general y específicamente la nueva agenda para la paz, que se debe negociar en 2023, 2024. Esta es la idea principal de la secretaria general, parte de su idea principal, que parece estar un poco flat ahora mismo debido a la geopolítica y las tensiones globales, pero en realidad podría proporcionar una muy útil construcción si hubiera algún tipo de cuerpo de cross disciplina establecido a través de esta sesión especial. Sabes, eso podría actuar como un muy buen entrenamiento y una muy buena manera de ayudar a ponerle un hueso en los huesos para lo que esta nueva agenda para la paz podría verse. Y por último, me encantaría si una sesión especial fuera llamada, un resultado útil podría ser claramente fijar esta idea de la actual gasto militar y las construcciones armadas que estamos viendo como un riesgo estratégico específico en su propio derecho y uno que disproporcionalmente afecta a las comunidades en el sur global, así como reconoce los impactos desiguales de género del conflicto. Muchas gracias y lo dejaré ahí y pasaré a mis colegas de panel.
Muchas gracias, Ben, una presentación muy interesante con algunas ideas de lo que una sesión especial puede lograr. Apologies a aquellos en línea, salté un poco la pistola. No teníamos los micrófonos cuando empezamos, así que no habrían podido oírme. Así que solo para reiterar, mi nombre es Martin Butcher, soy asesor político sobre conflicto armado y derecho humanitario internacional para Oxfam y estoy dirigiendo esta sesión. Así que ahora vamos a pasar a la web a un contribuyente, Bina Lakshmi Nepram, que es fundador de tres diferentes organizaciones en desarmamento y reducción de la violencia, quien en 2013 fue nombrado por Acción sobre la Violencia Armada como uno de los cien más influyentes en el mundo trabajando en la reducción de la violencia armada y alguien que fue una parte muy importante de la campaña para lograr la negociación de la negociación de comercio armado, que como dije antes fue la razón por la que me uní a Oxfam. Así que muchas gracias por estar con nosotros, Bina, y a ti.
Primero de todo, es usualmente cuando el término desarmamento en las Naciones Unidas, en todos los tiempos, siempre se refiere a desarmamento nuclear. Pero fue el ex secretario general de la ONU, Butros Bhutros Ghali, quien en realidad conoció el término microdesarmamento para ver los aspectos de cómo las armas pequeñas y las armas light están creando peligro en el mundo. Y yo mismo y mujeres indígenas de Manipur en el noreste de India, fronteriza con Burma, hemos enfrentado este tema y así los próximos cinco a siete minutos que voy a, sabes, sortear hoy, traí un par de presentaciones PowerPoint para asegurarme que muchos de ustedes están escuchando sobre Manipur por primera vez, para entender por qué comenzamos este trabajo sobre desarmamento. Así que permítame hacer un poco de share screen. Así que esto es, sí. Así que este es el movimiento de paz de mujeres indígenas y la llamada y por qué estamos uniendo esta llamada para activar una sesión especial sobre desarmamento. Primero de todo, por qué comenzamos, es realmente importante entender por qué estamos haciendo este trabajo. Y nuestro trabajo sobre desarmamento no comenzó en un proyecto hace dos años, comenzamos hace dos décadas. La historia de lo que pasa en una parte en particular del mundo, que se llama la frontera entre Indo-Burma, noreste de India, hogar de 100 millones de personas pertenecientes a 300 grupos indígenas, donde hay cien grupos armados operando y más de 500.000 tropas de las fuerzas armadas. Yo crecí en Manipur, donde se impuso una ley marcial aquí hasta hoy, desde el año 1958. Solo para ver cuántas de las áreas de conflicto donde hay heavy weaponization es tan hermosa. Estas son las personas, los Lepcha, en la frontera del noreste de India y China, Tibet. Estos son los pueblos de destino de nuestras regiones fronterizas de China. Y recordaros del continuo desplazamiento de Burma debido al descanso de la democracia pro desde el año pasado y durante muchos, muchos años. Y así continuamos trabajando. Así que el área, la razón por la que necesitamos entender la militarización, nuevamente, estas son las formas en las que la paramilitariedad india opera en Manipur, mi país. Hay 350 estaciones militares aquí, así es como crecí. Nuestra vida detiene a las 4 p. m. porque en la noche cuando crecí, nada se movió excepto insurgencia militar. Y también al mismo tiempo, lo que pasa es que esta rampa, la razón por la que traigo estas imágenes es para llevar a la conclusión de cómo los cinco miembros permanentes del Consejo de Seguridad de la ONU produce el 88% de las armas del mundo. Y estas armas están llegando a Manipur. Los Estados Unidos pueden haber nunca oído hablar de Manipur, pero sus armas están siendo guardadas por muchos de nuestros grupos armados. Estas son imágenes de toda mi investigación, armas de mis investigaciones, armas de 13 países han inundado la región. Así que esto es como, para muchos de ustedes, SOAS están escuchando esto y estudiantes, nuestro trabajo sobre desarmamento, para mí, comenzó con la investigación en mi universidad y estas son algunos de los aspectos de la investigación. El impacto de las armas en nuestras vidas es realmente real. Estas son imágenes de mujeres con las que hemos trabajado, Imma Chandragini, sus dos hijos murieron en un día. Familias de conflictos, estas son mujeres de Manipur con las que trabajamos en un nivel diario en el que la gran proliferación de armas ha hecho que muchos de los jóvenes de mi región sean atacados y disparados y trabajamos con muchas de las familias de los sobrevivientes. La violencia sexual en conflictos es una realidad, Tangja Manorama, arrestado, violado y matado extradicionalmente por las fuerzas armadas indígenas. Si vienes a Manipur, cuando las cosas son mejores, verás tantas tumbas de conflicto en nuestra región y, por lo tanto, el trabajo sobre desarmamento. Porque nos damos cuenta de que India, mi país, que da no violencia al mundo, es ahora uno de los mayores proveedores de armas. Somos los segundos proveedores de armas de los Estados Unidos después de Arabia Saudita. Así que Gandhi debe estar en su cama hoy. No somos más el land of nonviolence, somos un país que ahora adora al matador de Gandhi. Esta es la realidad de la mayor democracia del mundo, que estamos tratando de cambiar. Ahora, he marcado armas que están inundadas en mi región y, de nuevo, como mencioné, mi asociación con las Naciones Unidas comenzó con mi tesis de máster. Es este trabajo el que Safer World in UK reconoce y fue ellos quienes realmente me llevaron a comenzar el trabajo en el programa de acción de las Naciones Unidas. Fui el líder del programa de Asia del Sur sobre la negociación de armas internacional. Este es el trabajo que se está haciendo en los últimos años en India. Y nos damos cuenta de que necesitamos crear organizaciones, así es como comenzamos la red de sobrevivientes de las mujeres de Manipur. Y luego también fundamos la Fundación de las Armas Control, tenemos un oficio en Manipur y tenemos un oficio en Delhi. Ahora, por qué, sabes, eso es por qué en el trabajo de desarmamento, yo misma siendo indígena, me damos cuenta de cómo mujeres indígenas, en particular en India, la mayor democracia del mundo, han estado liderando. Tenemos formas históricas increíbles en las que hemos, sabes, visto problemas de género y desarmamento y también hemos demostrado que el desarmamento, sabes, los documentos de la ONU deben convertirse en acción en el terreno. Y he visto a las madres y abuelas de Manipur realmente pidiendo paz y desarmamento en estas partes. Nuestra generación siguió el trabajo al comenzar la iniciativa femenina del noreste de India por la Paz y pudimos escribir libros porque tenemos una gran scholarship, pudimos obtener acción en el terreno. También elaboramos legislación india, también levantamos temas en el parlamento interino y a nivel global vinimos a la ONU y también trabajamos con muchos, muchos y comenzamos alianzas, especialmente porque los pueblos indígenas viven en los hotspots de biodiversidad donde el 80% de los conflictos del mundo está actualmente allí, donde las armas están inundando muchas de nuestras regiones. Así que es por eso que comenzamos la alianza global de pueblos indígenas. Ahora trabajamos en siete zonas sociales, indígenas, culturales del mundo. Y mi punto final, he sido parte de muchos programas de la ONU, en el programa de acción de la ONU sobre la negociación de comercio armado, tú nombras una negociación de desarmamento y he sido parte de ella. Pero al mismo tiempo, necesitamos preguntar por qué estos no funcionan de la forma que deberían. Y es por eso que tengo fe en que buenas organizaciones comprometidas, ya sea que estés conectado con universidades que no son financiadas por grupos armados, tenemos que realmente tener la ética porque el mundo depende de nosotros. Algunos de los elementos que siento que tenemos que trabajar hacia la ONU, incluyen y involucrar más mujeres y organizaciones de paz de base indígenas y aquellas afectadas por los conflictos. Evitar los errores cometidos por los antiguos capitanes que eran exclusionarios en naturaleza. Como mencioné, necesitamos negociar que los miembros permanentes de la ONU que producen el 88% de las armas del mundo, ahora estamos evolucionando el trabajo de decolonizando la ONU porque la ONU, como todos sabemos, comenzó después de la Segunda Guerra Mundial. Ahora necesitamos decolonizar el proceso de desarmamento. Lo que significa es muy simple, ser más inclusivo, obtener más personas afectadas como nosotros, afectadas por el conflicto. Nos encantaría trabajar juntos. Y de nuevo, como también mencionó Ben antes, necesitamos reducir el presupuesto en el gasto militar. Sin esto, no serán capaces de, sabes, traer un mundo con paz. Las organizaciones del norte y del sur globales y las comunidades, instituciones, académicos, jóvenes necesitan trabajar colectivamente juntos. Sin esto, no serán capaces de hacer todo en la ONU. Y finalmente, como mencioné, el gasto militar, este hermoso gráfico que encontré en línea, y necesitamos realmente asegurar que esto se reduce porque sin eso no podemos lograr el desarrollo sostenible. Y con dos hermosas diapositivas, esto es en solidaridad con el pueblo de Burma. Aunque están opresos y reprimidos y matados, todavía los personas fueron capaces de crear formas artísticas con flores pidiendo que los pueblos de Burma sean capaces de obtener paz y justicia. Otra imagen de la exhibición de pieza de paz en el museo de diseño Smithsonian Cooper Design, en la que hay una madre con una pistola con una flor allí. Estos son los modos en los que tenemos que resistir y tenemos que, nuevamente, las Naciones Unidas, llamo, la forma en que explico a las Naciones Unidas a un pueblo en Manipur es así. Tenemos a nuestros padres, si los padres son como nuestros estados nacionales. Si los padres no oyen, vamos a los abuelos, que llamo a las Naciones Unidas. Vas a las Naciones Unidas, ves este hermoso mural, haz lo que otros hacen para que no lo hagan ustedes. Un hermoso recordatorio de que si los estados nacionales están produciendo armas de guerra, si quieren vivir un legado para sus nietos y niñas de paz, entonces tienen que detener las guerras que están produciendo en diferentes partes del mundo, en particular en el sur global, en particular en las comunidades negra y blanca indígenas. Así que con esto, me uní al llamamiento de clarificación y le dije gracias, y aman en mi idioma indígena y uní al llamamiento de clarificación de cada y cada organismo, individuos, estudiantes, individuos comprometidos, líderes religiosos y diplomáticos para poder traer, sabes, y activar, la ONU fue creada para la paz y no debería ser solo una sesión especial. La ONU debe abrazar desarmamento con todo corazón como el principio cardenal y no nos detendremos hasta que esto se haga porque la ONU es parte de nosotros tanto como somos parte de las Naciones Unidas del mundo.
Muchas gracias, Bina, por tu pasión y tu experiencia que te hacen un advocate tan importante para el desarmamento y para los derechos humanos. Gracias también por tu brevedad, ya que estamos corriendo, como todos saben, bastante tarde, así que necesitamos tratar de recoger un poco de tiempo. Así que solo introduciré rápidamente a uno de mis bosses, Danny Sri Skandaraja, el jefe ejecutivo de Oxfam GB, quien preparó un mensaje de video para nosotros, que escucharemos ahora.
Hola, soy Danny Sri Skandaraja, jefe ejecutivo de Oxfam Great Britain. Gracias por invitar a Oxfam a ser parte de este importante evento. Oxfam es un NGO global de humanitario y desarrollo que ha estado trabajando para aliviar la pobreza y el sufrimiento en todo el mundo desde que se fundó hace 80 años. Pero desde el siglo XIX hemos campanado por la controlación de las armas y medidas de desarmamento y, por supuesto, apoyamos con todo corazón una llamada para una cuarta sesión especial de la Asamblea General de la ONU sobre desarmamento como un medio para apoyar nuestros objetivos principales. A menudo preguntan por qué un NGO de reducción de la pobreza estaría trabajando en la controlación de las armas y el desarmamento. Y para mí, la respuesta es simple, la pobreza, la violencia armada y el conflicto están vinculados en un ciclo que previene la paz, que promueve los abusos de derechos humanos y que impide el desarrollo. Quiero decir, el Chártar de la ONU llama a todos a trabajar hacia el desarmamento general y completo como parte del establecimiento y mantenimiento de la paz internacional y seguridad con la menor diversion de los recursos humanos y económicos del mundo. Creo que sin controlar las armas es imposible garantizar la seguridad. Sin seguridad, el desarrollo económico es imposible. Y así, mientras las pistolas empiezan a salir, nuestras comunidades nunca podrán ser seguras. Eso es lo que nuestros socios nos dicen a menudo y ese es el argumento que vincula la negociación de comercio armado, por la que campanamos durante 20 años, con el logro de los objetivos de desarrollo sostenible hoy. Y ahora necesitamos ir más lejos que los tratados individuales. Hemos visto una resurgencia de gran confrontación en Europa y Asia y al mismo tiempo, como los conflictos relacionados con la pobreza, el hambre y el cambio climático crecen en todo el mundo. Y como el correr de las armas resume, este es el momento ideal para una cuarta sesión especial de la Asamblea General de la ONU sobre desarmamento. Necesitamos reanudar el movimiento por la controlación de las armas y el desarmamento como contribuyentes para la seguridad humana sostenible. La controlación de las armas se refiere explícitamente en el objetivo SDG 16.4, sobre controlar los flujos ilícitos de las armas. Y así, reducir las armas y limitar su uso tendría que sostener el logro de muchos SDGs. SDG 1, sobre reducir la pobreza, 2, sobre acabar con el hambre, 4, sobre buena salud, 5, sobre reducir la violencia basada en género, 11, sobre crear ciudades sostenibles y comunidades, 17, sobre asociaciones, podría seguir. Nuestra experiencia nos muestra que la comunidad global necesita actuar en esto ahora. Desde nuestra experiencia de programación humanitaria en estados afectados por los conflictos y los conflictos, hemos visto la obligación de actuar en lugares como Yemen, Siria, los territorios palestinos ocupados, Palestina y Israel, República Central África, Sudán, Mali y en otros lugares. Controlar las armas requiere transparencia, transparencia en asuntos militares y proporcionar los marcos legislativos, administrativos y legales que hagan posible la implementación. Esto traerá beneficios adicionales. La escrutinía parlamentaria sobre la adquisición de armas, almacenamiento y transferencia traerá responsabilidad del gobierno y las fuerzas de seguridad, mejorando la buena gobernanza en áreas como custom, seguridad de almacenamiento y seguridad, supervisión civil del ejército, supervisión de adquisición y muchas otras áreas. También dan a los estados un sentido mejor de seguridad como pueden entender mejor la postura de seguridad de sus vecinos. Esto no será fácil, los estados ricos pueden permitirse la implementación del tratado, los que tienen menos recursos necesitarán ayuda financiera y técnica. En 2015, la gasto total de la ODA eligible en actividades de reforma del sector de la seguridad que pueden sostener la controlación de las armas y el desarmamento se limitó a 972 millones de dólares. Encorajamos a todos los estados donantes a construir seguridad pagando por la controlación de las armas y el desarmamento como una herramienta para reducir el conflicto. Oxfam sigue comprometido con trabajar con ustedes hacia un mundo donde la controlación de las armas ayuda a sostener el desarrollo económico, reducir la pobreza y el sufrimiento y el daño humano en todo el mundo. Y esperamos participar en la próxima sesión especial sobre desarmamento. Gracias.
Así que sin retraso, voy a pasar adelante. Esperábamos tener al Dr Francesco Lenci de las conferencias de Pugwash sobre la ciencia y los asuntos mundiales con nosotros hoy, pero, desafortunadamente, por razones personales, no puede estar aquí. Así que su declaración será leída con cariño por Harry Spencer, quien es un miembro de la studenta Young Pugwash UK y un académico que recientemente graduó con un máster en relaciones internacionales de la Universidad de Birmingham, donde su investigación se centra en la teoría estratégica nuclear y las implicaciones de la seguridad de las tecnologías emergentes. Harry, a ti. Gracias.
Genial, muchas gracias. Buenas tardes a todos, es genial verlos de vuelta para las sesiones del tarde. Antes de nada, me gustaría comenzar dando las gracias a Scrap Weapons y a todo mi apoyo de Pugwash por haberme dado a venir a hacer esta declaración hoy. Antes de proceder a más, como uno debería con material que no es su propio, me gustaría declarar que esto fue escrito por alguien más y, por lo tanto, es importante seguir adelante para apreciar que no todos los que están aquí reflejan necesariamente mis opiniones o cualquier otra que me afiliase. Sin más, siguiendo el apelido concluyente del Manifesto de Russell Einstein de 1955, en 1957, 22 científicos que venían de los Estados Unidos, la Unión Soviética, Japón, Reino Unido, Canadá, Australia, China, Francia y Polonia se reunieron en el pequeño pueblo de Pugwash en Nova Scotia, Canadá. El manifesto, firmado hace dos años por Bertrand Russell, Albert Einstein y nueve otros científicos eminentes, entre los cuales Joseph Rotblatt, quien sigue siendo el único científico que ha dejado el Project Manhattan en diciembre de 1944, cuando era claro que Alemania nunca poseería armas nucleares. El manifesto llamó a los científicos del mundo entero, independientemente de su afiliación política, a discutir juntos la amenaza existencial de la civilización humana representada por las armas atómicas. El manifesto, en cita, consideró, en vista del hecho de que cualquier guerra mundial futura, las armas nucleares certamente se utilizarán y que esas armas amenazan con la existencia continua de la humanidad, pedimos a los gobiernos del mundo que se den cuenta y reconozcan públicamente que su propósito no puede ser ampliado por una guerra mundial y les pedimos, consecuentemente, encontrar medios pacíficos para el respeto a todas las cuestiones de disputa entre ellos. Desde 1957 hasta el momento, Pugwash ha continuado organizando reuniones, symposias, workshops, grupos de estudio y eventos adicionales con científicos y expertos en cuestiones científicas en todo el mundo para promover paz, desarmamento, no proliferación, especialmente donde se trata de las armas de destrucción masiva. Más de 4.000 personas han participado en actividades de Pugwash, todos participando en una capacidad individual, ni representando al gobierno ni a organizaciones externas. Pugwash was also active throughout the Cold War, mainly offering communication channels between different groups. This allowed Pugwash to play a background role during the crises, such as that of the Soviet missiles in Cuba, in Vietnam, and among other occasions, also for the initiation of negotiations on the Nuclear Weapons Nonproliferation Treaty, the Nuclear Prohibition Treaty, the various negotiations between the US and the USSR on arms control, the Biological Chemical Weapons Conventions and the Nuclear Weapons Prohibition Treaty. In recent years, Pugwash has sought to keep open communication between warring parties in Afghanistan. It helps reduce the differences on the issues regarding Iranian nuclear and conflict programmes in the Middle East, as well as to try and stimulate discussion on regional and world security. Pugwash conducted expert talks on various projects, such as the prohibition of nuclear weapons, the so-called killer robots and other devices without human control, the development of offensive cybernetic systems and other weapons technologies that we continue to see today. Pugwash, in nineteen ninety-five, in collaboration with its partner Joseph Rotblatt, was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for their contributions to reducing the role of nuclear weapons in international politics and also for the future elimination of all nuclear weapons stockpiles. In twenty seventeen, with great tenacity, a hundred and twenty-two nuclear states, non-nuclear countries, managed to negotiate and adopt a treaty that prohibits all nuclear weapons and offers a way for the destruction of all existing arsenals. In June this year, the first meeting of TPNW state parties was held in Vienna and even representatives of non-party states contributed to that discussion, namely including Germany, the Netherlands and Norway. Up to now, more than sixty have ratified it, but armed powers oppose it and have stated that they will continue to develop their nuclear capacity. They are co-established as persistent opponents to this treaty, thus hoping to prevent its acceptance as a norm of customary international law. The TPNW is a clear demonstration of the categorical refusal of the majority of countries in the world and peoples to the acceptance of continued existence of nuclear weapons. We must continue working to overcome the objections of nuclear countries and to strengthen membership of the TPNW, including those who depend on this so-called umbrella, that is, defence packs that provide for the use of nuclear weapons belonging to countries which are not resident. In Vienna, the state parties did more than just reiterate their opposition to nuclear weapons. They also adopted a concrete action plan for implementing said treaty. The Vienna Action Plan structured around six main sections. The universalisation of the treaty, steps towards total elimination of nuclear weapons, measures to address the human and environmental effects of nuclear use, institutionalising scientific and technical advice, the relationship between the Nuclear Ban Treaty and nuclear disarmament and the non-proliferation regime, and other matters essential for achieving that treaty's goals, including not least principles for inclusivity, cooperation and gender provisions within that treaty. The question of first use of nuclear weapons remains one of the most important issues of our current times. Many civil society organisations and experts advocate that the importance of nuclear countries pledging not to use their nuclear weapons first. The main argument in favour of this is, of course, that if all nine current arsenal owners accept this commitment, the danger of a nuclear war will be greatly mitigated. These actions can include de-alerting, eliminating launch-on-warning postures, lowering threat postures and adopting policies of no first use or sole-purpose deterrence. Of course, an NFU declaration cannot be considered as an objective in and of itself, only to constitute a concrete step towards universal disarmament. Last year, Presidents Putin and Biden met in Geneva. They reaffirmed the understanding of Ronald Reagan and the now-laid Mikhail Gorbachev that in nineteen eighty-six, a nuclear war can neither be won nor can it ever happen. Now, we hope that other countries recognised by the NPT, China, France and the United Kingdom, will join it with a declaration that can be solemnly made in the Security Council. Biden and Putin had agreed to initiate a dialogue of strategic stability that they believe would lay the foundations for future arms control measures and in reducing the risk of our current stockpiles of weapons. Unfortunately, the actual situation is severely dramatic and risky, inherently because of the war of Ukraine, which currently and tragically was initiated by President Putin on February twenty-fourth this year. Since nineteen sixty-two Cuban Missile Crisis, the world has never had such a dangerous operational environment. But while the Cuban Missile Crisis lasted thirteen days without a war, the war in Ukraine seems to set to continue for further months. On Friday, August twenty-sixth, after four weeks of deliberations, the tenth review conference on the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty concluded that no final agreement. The United Nations Under-Secretary-General for Disarmament Affairs Izumi Nakamitsu said, "I would say that the implication of the Ukrainian war was the biggest reason for this conference being unable to adopt the consensus document now." NPT is a crucial and most important element of the multilateral disarmament and unfortunately, working this direction is now consequently made more difficult. We keep on hoping that new negotiations between Russia and Ukraine can take place, according to Pope Francis's appeals and the Pugwash mission promoting dialogue among divides. For sure, civil society organisations like Pugwash and academia need to step up the campaign for nuclear disarmament and peace. The Russell Einstein Manifesto itself concluded with, and I quote, "There lies before us, if we choose, continual progress in happiness, knowledge and wisdom. Shall we instead choose death because we cannot forget our quarrels? We appeal as human beings to human beings. Remember your humanity and forget the rest. If you can do so, the way lies open to a new paradise. If you cannot, there lies before you the risk of universal death." In a recent statement, Pugwash proceeded to identify a number of urgent tasks for our time. First was to promote the widest possible awareness and understanding of present nuclear dangers as they evolve. The second would be to promote in particular the end of the conflict in Ukraine with reasonable compromises and respect for various regional diversities, taking into account the legitimate security concerns of different parties. The war will not be solved by further shipments of weapons, but by taking established and effective negotiation. Third was to support an urgent ceasefire in Ukraine that would start to meaningful negotiations and the start of reconstruction of a devastated country with international support. The last was, of course, support in all possible ways the restoration of the JCPOA agreement with Iran. We wish to close this concluding statement with a paragraph of two-six-two from Pope Francis's Fratelli Tutti. "International peace and stability cannot be based on the false sense of security. The threat of mutual destruction or total annihilation or on simply trying to maintain balance of power. In this context, the ultimate goal of the total elimination of nuclear weapons comes both as a challenge and as a moral and humanitarian imperative." We conclude therefore with the same conclusions of Joseph Rotblatt, who wrote for Bulletin of the Atomic Scientists in nineteen eighty-five, the fortieth anniversary of the bombings of Hiroshima. He said, and I quote, "After forty years, one question keeps nagging me. Have we learned enough not to repeat the mistakes we made then? I'm not so sure even about myself. Not being an absolute pacifist, I cannot guarantee that I would not behave in the same way should a similar situation had arisen. Our concepts of morality seem to get overthrown once military action starts. It is therefore the most important thing not to allow such a situation to develop. Our prime effort must concentrate on the prevention of nuclear war because such a war not only morality, but the whole fabric of civilisation would disappear. Eventually, however, we must therefore aim at the elimination of all kinds of war." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Harry, and thank you to Dr Lenci, who wrote that statement. Next, we're going to another video message from Grace Arau, the Executive Director of Women Volunteers for Peace in Kenya. Grace is a young Kenyan woman who is, as I said, the Executive Director of Women Volunteers for Peace, which is a community-based organisation focusing on building resilience and the capacity of young women and girls through peace education, conflict prevention and resolution from a trauma-healing, informed perspective. This is an important message from somebody in the global south. So we'll hear Grace now.
Hello, my name is Grace Abambora and I am joining in from Kenya, the western part of Kenya, that is Kisumu County. And I am twenty-six years old and today I am excited to join at this particular conference to tell my story. So I am a YouTuber. I call myself a peace YouTuber. And my work is to tell stories of young women and men on their work and contribution towards peace and development in the African continent. But I am also the Executive Director of Women Volunteers for Peace, famously known as WOP, which is a young women-led, community-based organisation based in the Lake Region, a part of Kenya. And what we do is to work with girls and young women aged between thirteen and thirty years old. And these young women have been trained as champions and agents of peace. And they form a bigger part of three hundred and fifty-seven network that we are working in. And you realise that young women and girls faces a lot of discrimination in the society, especially in Kenya now that we are headed towards elections and political violence, you know, related to, you know, issues of elections. But also historically, we've known how conflicts related to politics affects women and girls majorly. So it may work in the community and in attempt to bridge the gap between global policies and local actions. I would love to call upon the UN to activate the UN Fourth Special Session sooner than later because these are some of the reasons that I would want to put across. One, Africa is a continent that continues to be attacked by terror groups daily, especially in Kenya. There's a lot of instances where we have witnessed terror attacks. And the people who are targeted most, who becomes victims of such circumstances, are women and children. We don't need to see more women and girls die. We need to have them become part of the decision-making table. We need to see them participate fully in disarmament. And thirteen-twenty-five talks about active involvement and participation of women and girls in peace processes. And that is where young women like myself comes in. We need to see the UN Fourth Special Session talking about how women are affected differently, how girls and children are affected differently in armed conflict. And in today's world, it is a home to the generation of young people. And my generation especially forms ninety percent of, you know, the total population, I would say, in Sub-Saharan Africa. And young people have a critical role to play in disarmament. Because, one, young people are the perpetrators. They are the active participants when it comes to armed conflict. Also, you realise that thirteen-twenty-five, which talks about the active involvement of young women in peace processes, it is very key because women and girls forms a huge number of people who undergo sexual and gender-based violence, including in emergency situations. And especially now in Kenya, elections are around the corner and you see that more women and girls are affected. And the fear that comes along with elections is real. And I just want to tell a bit of my story. Now, in twenty twenty-one, I happened to have participated in a conference that was calling on youth-inclusive participation in peace processes. And in that process, I was able to, you know, I received a lot of threats afterwards because I was talking about my work, I was talking about my community and how especially girls and young women have been used not only as empathisers to violent extremist groups, but they've also been used to recruit their fellows into such groupings. And during that time, when I talked about my work, then I received threats. And issues about protection is also very key. Young women and girls are increasingly becoming targets by the criminal gangs. And in many constituencies where they're used as recruiters and surveillance to pass radical information to their peers. Therefore, girls and young women require sensitisation and economic empowerment, especially for self-reliance, but also just to ensure that they form part of the decision-making tables. They contribute towards the development and the peace processes that we are able to see now. And so the Fourth Special Session on Disarmament should present the unique opportunity to advance our shared goal, which is a general and complete disarmament and especially putting young people at the apex of prevention and active participation. I would love to also share that the School of Oriental and African Studies, University of London, that is SOAS, University of London, has been really my inspiration because my interest is in the university being a leading high education institution that is specialised in the study of Africa as a continent, among other continents. So I would love to, you know, if possible, that I get a support to study in this particular institution, to pursue a course that is on research, to work on any contemporary issues that emerges in Africa, but especially in the context of disarmament because that is my area of work. I would love to say that I support and appreciate the great efforts of Scrap Weapons for building a community to support the working group that is convening this Fourth Special Session on Disarmament. This conference will constitute towards the agenda for the UN General Assembly. And I'm looking forward to this session being activated by the UN General Assembly and actually taking active participation in it.
An excellent message. And in the spirit of putting young people at the apex of our movement, we now move to Lucy Tiller, who recently completed an MPhil at the University of Cambridge and is now working in global health advocacy. I also noticed from her bio that she is a co-convenor of Youth and Student Campaign for Nuclear Disarmament and the student part of that is a job that I held forty years ago. So over to you, Lucy.
Thank you so much and good afternoon, friends. As just mentioned, I'm Lucy and I'm the outgoing chair now of Youth for the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. We were launched in twenty twenty-one as a focal point for young leaders and advocates for the abolition of nuclear weapons. We wanted to create a disarmament organisation for youth and by youth, which would provide a starting point for those just entering the movement and leadership opportunities for those who have a really clear vision for youth engagement in disarmament. Youth for TPNW is now a global network, including Grace, actually, who we just heard from, contributing underrepresented voices to the disarmament movement. The organisation promotes collaboration, networking and bridge-building between youth from around the world and also between youth experts and other leaders. Alongside our partners, including Scrap Weapons, we organised the Youth MSP for the Meeting of State Parties of the TPNW, which took place in June twenty twenty-two. This event brought over one hundred and thirty young people to the MSP online and in person in Vienna, platformed young voices and opened up space for discussion about the future of youth engagement with the movement. Where are the young people? Why aren't your generation interested in disarmament? How can we get more young people into our organisation? Some of you will have been asked these questions and some of you may have asked them of your younger colleagues. As a young person involved in disarmament, I am not exaggerating when I say that. In most meetings, I am the youngest person there by thirty or forty years. This is actually most pronounced, I've noticed, in campaigning groups and NGO spaces. It is fantastic that we have so much wisdom and experience in this movement and that we can draw on decades of knowledge represented in our movement. But we need to invigorate a new generation of activists, policy experts and advocates if there is going to be a future. It is fantastic to see organisations like Scrap and my own organisation, Youth for TPNW, beginning to do the work of creating a new generation of young leaders on disarmament. Young people have the most to lose from a failure of disarmament policy. We are already set to inherit a planet which is flooded and burning. Add to that the threat of nuclear war and we're not looking at a particularly bright future. But it doesn't have to be like that. This is a moment of challenge, but it's also a moment of opportunity. As more and more states sign and ratify the TPNW, we are able to move closer to a world free from nuclear weapons, a world where the international community can unite to secure its own future free from imminent nuclear threats. It is vital that youth voices are platformed and empowered. Young people are the leaders of tomorrow and as such, we must be included on conversations about our future. But young people are not just the leaders of the future. We are the largest generation in history. We are not people in waiting. We are affected by decisions made by our governments and global decision-making bodies now. We have a right to contribute to conversations about national We have a right to contribute to conversations about national and international security. At Youth for T P N W, we advocate for the complete abolition of nuclear weapons through the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. And we advocate for youth voices as an absolutely vital part of that conversation. The failure of the M P T to reach a consensus only a few weeks ago shows us that we do need something new. We need to empower civil society, state representatives, NGOs, religious representatives, students, academics, young people and those who have been involved in this movement for decades. It's from this position that I wholeheartedly support the call for a new special session on disarmament. Disarmament is urgent and for young people, it is not a nice-to-have. It's necessary for our survival and for our planet's future livability. It's so good to see the broad coalition which Scrap have brought together for this conference today because we need our urgent conversations to bring together voices from all across society. And that goes beyond what I've just been talking about, about including young people and goes into inclusion and openness on all levels, uh including making meaningful spaces for NGOs and civil society and decision-making spaces. I would really recommend to all of you um P S R's Jasmine Owens's recent Inkstick Media article in which she wrote a response to the frosty reception which civil society received at the M P T Review Conference. In it, she said, and I quote, "However impressive the NGO statements were, their sentiments were heard by only a handful of state delegates. They allowed NATO a primetime slot and tossed NGOs at the end of the week when most delegates were already gone." This was after having to fight tooth and nail to even be allowed to attend the conference. For many people trying to come from non-Western countries, the hurdles they had to surpass and hoops they had to jump through ultimately prevented their participation at all. With the excessively stringent and tedious structures of several Western states' visa processes that are almost impossible to navigate, especially if you come from a non-Western country, I am no longer surprised at the sea of mostly white faces I see around me as amongst civil society participants." And then she goes on to say, "To abolish nuclear weapons and rid ourselves of the constant existential threat that they impose on our daily lives, whether we realise it or not, will take all of us." Our pending a seventy-seven-year nuclear status quo is no small feat, but it can and will be done by the people for the people. There's no time to wait for institutions such as the M P T to catch up with our rapidly deteriorating reality. We must fight for this future or risk having no future at all. I don't know about you, but I know which option I choose," end quote. I support the calls for a special session on disarmament, but we must make sure that any such space does not repeat the exclusions of the past, including the very recent past. There are practical ways to do this, visa support, for example, and fully hybrid meetings like the one we're having today, as well as more general points about creating a culture of welcome and platforming underrepresented voices. We need renewed urgency, renewed diversity and renewed optimism in this movement. We've been working towards disarmament as a movement for a really long time. And it's easy to start feeling like it isn't actually possible to achieve global zero. But when I talk to the young leaders of Youth for T P N W, they convince me that our goal is in fact possible. Youth for T P N W is only a year old, but we've already brought young voices to the disarmament discussion at all levels, provided a genuinely open platform for people getting involved in this movement and invigorated each other with much-needed urgency and optimism. I'm genuinely excited for what's next. If you want to see more young people involved in disarmament, please do come and have a chat with me afterwards about what Youth for T P N W is doing to open up high-level decision-making spaces and build a movement of young leaders in this space. Or to talk more about practical and concrete ways to broaden engagement in your movement or your organisation with younger people. It is, I promise you, my favourite thing to talk about. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Lucy. That's a a great message about inclusive disarmament work, which is so important. Thank you. So now we're going to move back to Zoom, um to the Honourable Patricia Torsney. Um Patricia was um Member of Parliament in Canada for Burlington, Ontario from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand and six. And since two thousand and fourteen, she has been the permanent observer of the Interparliamentary Union to the United Nations. Um thank you for being with us, Patricia.
Thank you. Uh thank you all for uh for being there. Um I noticed, Martin, at the beginning you talked about the role of NGOs. Of course, the I P U is not an NGO, um it represents parliamentarians. And um uh let me just say that we've heard some fantastic presentations. So as has already been noted, um twenty twenty-one marked a turning point when the yearly uh global military spending surpassed two trillion US dollars. And as others have mentioned, this trend is only worsening as international tensions increase throughout twenty twenty-two. We are witnessing increased investments in militarisation and disarmament from governments right around the world. And as Lucy said, we must address this reality collectively with the sole priority of the right of citizens to be freed from violence and free from conflict. You know, military expenditure should not be thought of just as resources spent on armament, but as resources not spent on education and healthcare and the environment, public facilities, peace, development, science, the arts or investing in the economy. In this context, this is a very timely gathering to address the activation of a Fourth Special Session of the U N General Assembly on disarmament. And when it comes to disarmament, the role of parliaments may not be the first thing that comes to all of your minds. Yet parliaments have a legislative function that translates key U N disarmament and non-proliferation efforts into legislation, which is debated and adopted and in the process better understood by the people. Parliaments have an oversight function. They can hold their governments accountable, posing questions in the House or in committees and examining specific governmental choices. Parliaments pass national budgets and can shed light on the efficiency and effectiveness of public money, raising questions to the government approving or vetoing those budget bills. Many parliamentarians work to reduce military spending, favouring other considerations for a more human aspect of security, such as education or healthcare. And finally, their representative functions give parliamentarians the ability to carry the voices and concerns of all their citizens, including Grace and the voices of young people and Bonnie and the people she's concerned about, and ensure that decisions and legislation reflect their reality and their needs. They can raise awareness about disarmament in their parliaments and in their constituencies, often side by side with NGOs. And they can highlight the lived experience of citizens like Bonnie impacted by the proliferation of weapons of all sorts. These parliamentary functions can and should be used to promote the activation of a Fourth U N Special General Assembly Special Session devoted to disarmament, lobbying governments to provide support to the Working Group on Convening the Fourth Special Session directly and by engaging constituents, political parties and civil society organisations. Parliaments and parliamentarians are key stakeholders in this agenda. They represent the people of their countries, people whose first wish is to live in peace and in a secure environment that allows their families to thrive. And to succeed and to succeed in reaching that aim, parliaments have two major approaches at their disposal. Focus on human security, creating an enabling environment for human development and extend the concept of security beyond the physical security of people to include health, the economy, political rights and the environment. And focus on common security. One country's security cannot be achieved at the expense of another's. And joint efforts such as nuclear disarmament, strong limitations on conventional weapons and reduced military spending are needed. These approaches are key to the I P U's work on peace and security. They're at the core of our disarmament endeavours because it's been proven that by investing in human and common security are quick ways to ensure prosperity in the long term. Weapons of mass destruction restrict the sustainable resolution of conflicts and constantly threaten the survival of humanity. And because the illicit and illicit proliferation of conventional weapons worsens the conditions of most vulnerable people in conflict zones and developing nations, significantly increasing the escalation of local, regional and international disagreements toward armed conflict. So the I P U works in several ways to enhance parliamentary action on disarmament, raising awareness that leads to concrete outcomes. Our efforts to help ensure multiple parliaments reported their annual military spending to the U N Military Expenditure Database following a webinar on the role of MPs in curbing military spending is one example. I P U worked with speakers of several parliaments that had not yet signed or ratified the Armstrong Treaty. Philippines and Gabon successfully ratified the treaty. And we just got message during this session that Gabon will submit its instrument of ratification next month, after a parliamentary champion promoted this action. I P U invited specific parliaments to a roundtable organised by the Comprehensive Nuclear Test Ban Treaty Organisation during the hundred and forty-fourth assembly in Nusse Dua just in March, opening concrete channels of communication that facilitated the ratification of the treaty by multiple parliaments. Timor-Leste and Tuvalu were added to the list of ratifying nations, bringing the treaty two steps closer to universalisation. I P U vigorously promotes the joint publication Assuring Our Common Future, and you can get that on our website at ipu.org. It's a guide to parliamentary action and supportive disarmament for security and sustainable development, raising awareness about the concrete actions parliaments can take on every field of disarmament. And lastly, our webinars engage hundreds of stakeholders, including parliamentarians and parliamentary staff and also civil society organisations, government organisations, experts, members of academia and other disarmament activists and enthusiasts. We'll continue to assist parliamentarians championing the activation of this Fourth Special Session in their respective parliaments, promoting disarmament as a forward-looking solution to contemporary issues. We remain willing to support disarmament and invite any parliamentarian, as Lucy just did, to reach out and help us raise this issue from their perspective, parliaments. I will now have the pleasure, well, actually, Martin might do this, of introducing uh the Honourable Dimitri Agliga, the Member of the Romanian Parliament, who will speak on behalf of the Parliamentary Assembly of the Mediterranean and provide us with a more regional perspective from the Euro-Mediterranean and Gulf countries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. It is a pleasure to be here, representing the Parliamentary Assembly of the Mediterranean, P A M, in this very timely event in front of such a prominent audience. At P A M, we follow with interest and concern the current international discussions on disarmament and nuclear proliferation. Nuclear proliferation and weapons control are essential elements to address in order to reach a stable and peaceful Euro-Mediterranean region. We are living complex and delicate times. To quote the U N Secretary-General, humanity is just one misunderstanding, one miscalculation away from nuclear annihilation. Almost thirty thousand nuclear weapons are held in arsenals around the world. And according to international analysts, there are clear indications that the reductions that have characterised global nuclear arsenals since the end of the Cold War have ended due to renewed geopolitical military confrontation, competition and technological advancement. All of the nuclear armed states are increasing or upgrading their arsenals and most of them are sharpening nuclear rhetoric and the role that nuclear weapons could play in their military strategies, or even worse, in their aggressive imperialist and anachronistic dreams. The brutal military aggression of Russia against Ukraine has seriously undermined the efforts of the international community on disarmament and the control of nuclear weapons. Russian officials
I think your um your micro papers are hitting your microphone.
Now it's okay.
There was a lot of feedback.
Is it? Okay. I hope it will be better. Russian officials use dangerous rhetoric and repeated tweets of escalating the conflict to nuclear warfare. The country's recent decisions to block the tenth review conference of the Treaty on the Nonproliferation of Nuclear Weapons or its opposition to the demilitarisation of Laparogia, nuclear, planted in the occupied territory of Ukraine, clearly and unilaterally endangered the security of the European continent and the entire world. This is the demonstration of how far-reaching the impact of Russia's aggressions against Ukraine has become. I would like to recall that even at some of the gloomiest moments of the Cold War, cooperation in support of the Nonproliferation Treaty was often possible thanks to the courage of real statement as President Gorbachev, whose memory I salute today. Today, the future of disarmament diplomacy, including armed controls, is dark and uncertain. Dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, this distressing picture must propel our renewed effort in supporting international concerns regarding nuclear and weapons control. Since the beginning of Russia's invasion in Ukraine, P A M has been following the developments of this tragedy, trying to mitigate the economic and security implications in the Euro-Mediterranean and Gulf regions. Last April, P A M organised a high-level mission to Romania, my country, in order to assist the work of logistic hubs in Portugal to bring humanitarian aid to the Ukrainian region of Odessa and Kherson. Parliamentary diplomacy is essential to further progress on disarmament, nonproliferation and weapons control. P A M will continue to support the work of the international community because cooperation is the key to promote peaceful security environment for us and the future generations. Thank you very much for the attention.
Uh thank you very much, both Patricia and Dimitri, for those very interesting um and important uh contributions to the meeting. Now, um without ado, I'm going to move on to our final speaker on this panel, Reina Braun, who is the Executive Director of the International Peace Bureau. Thanks for being with us, Reina. We look forward to hearing your words.
First of all, thank you for the invitation. And it's not so easy to be the final speaker in such a session, but I will try to do my best. Let's start with one sentence to I P B. The National Peace Bureau is the earliest, in the earliest and biggest international peace organisation, founded one year after I P U, namely in eighteen ninety-one. And it has today more than four hundred member organisations in about eighty countries in the world. And the main project of I P B is military spending. We organise every year around the days when Zebra is announcing the new military spending figures, the so-called G D A M, General Days Against Military Spending. This year, with about one hundred eighty actions in about fifty countries. So saying this was obviously, when Dan asked us if he can support the idea of the Fourth Special Session, we said immediately yes, because this is absolutely on the line of our work and our activity. Why is I P B so deeply engaged in the military spending issue? To say it in short terms, first of all, colleagues from us were a part of the team which were developing the Sustainable Development Goals. And you remember, some of you will remember, two years after the Sustainable Development Goals were adopted, there was a conflict in Addis Ababa discussing how to finance the Sustainable Development Goals. The U N said it costs about three hundred billion per year for ten years. And then there was a meeting, one hundred sixty countries were attending, a lot of suggestions, taxes for airplanes, taxes for education and and. But only one country at that time was mentioning military reduction, military disarmament. Only one country from these one hundred sixty. And this shows how urgent is our, how urgent is the need for our activities. We have to raise awareness that we cannot solve the global problems of the world without military spending, that we cannot solve the climate catastrophe without military spending. You know, like me, the U N funded one hundred billion. How much the countries were paying this year? Thirty-seven billion. And we are paying or spending two trillions for military spending. That is the reality. So this shows how urgent it is. And say a final word to the, I call it social tsunami, which will happen this autumn in many, many countries in the world, not only in Europe, mainly in the so-called the South. How we can solve the social problems in the world without military spending? By using the money, but not only by using the money, but also we need the cooperation between the countries. And can you imagine that under this situation of confrontation, we will come to cooperation military spending reduction? No. So we need cooperation. That is a need that we are so much in favour of this Fourth Military, Fourth Session of the U N. that we are so much in favor of this fourth military, fourth session of the UN. And you know, it is even more important. The third session was in the year nineteen eighty-seven. Can you remember this year? You know, I think the last days with the death of Gorbachev reminds us to these days. It was a time of cooperation and common work of the main countries in the world. And even at that time, we could not really reach deep step of disarmament. And now, by two trillion and the situation in the world how it is, we need even more urgent to overcome this confrontation situation, go to cooperation in disarmament. So this is the urgency for me to say that we need this fourth session and that we are supporting this idea so highly. And you know, we want to bring one idea to you which is related to this fourth session. Because fourth session is great, but what is the ongoing process? And we ask us why we don't have a COP process for disarmament? We have in November the COP twenty-sevens in Cairo to climate change with limited successes, but we have a process. We have a process, a COP process for diversity, but we don't have a COP process for disarmament. And I think we need this COP process, which means annual meetings, but not only annual meetings of the governments, but also annual meetings supported by the civil society, the peace movement, the parliamentarians and other social movements pushing for nuclear disarmament. We need this process because then we always can bring it again to the public and raise awareness for disarmament. And we are always urged to look for cooperation and coalition buildings. And my question to Nam, what will be the coalition of the future for disarmament? And I think we need these coalitions, maybe not with all Nam countries, but with the big majority of the Nam countries for going step forward for nuclear disarmament. So our suggestion is, yes, we need these four sessions, but maybe we should bring in the discussion that we need these four sessions to create a process for disarmament in the United Nations. And you know, we had some successes by creating these processes. The process for the treaty for the prohibition of nuclear weapons was not falling from the heaven. It was prepared by big conferences in event, Norway, Mexico and others. It was prepared by a common work of willingness countries and civil society. And from my point of view, we need the same for disarmament because of the urgency of this question. And maybe we can combine this and say, yes, we want to have a first highlight of first evaluation where we are in the year twenty twenty-five, where we have the fiftieth anniversary of the KSA process or the Helsinki process in Europe, which stimulate the process of cooperation and common security. So these are some of our ideas because we are thinking we need more actions on the street. That is the responsibility of the peace movement and other social movements. We need more awareness raising. These, I think, we had brilliant arguments today from the different parts of society and we need a process in the United Nations, which hopefully starts with the first session, the first special session at the UN, but develop a process for further activities with nuclear disarmament. I have not to repeat the U.N. Secretary, who was saying the urgency of it. I think it is urgent and we have to put all our forces together to develop and to create these processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Reiner. I think that's a very important reminder that peace and disarmament are not achieved at a single meeting, but as part of a process. I'm afraid that because we're running quite a bit behind time, we're going to have to cut out questions. So I'd just like to thank all of our speakers and encourage you, if you have questions here in the room, and I see we don't have any online, that you speak to members of the panel who are here afterwards. So thank you all very much and we shall move along.